Please stand for the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hello, call.
Mayor Hasler.
Here.
Alderman Smith. Alderwoman Johnson.
Here.
Alderman Donovan.
Eric.
Alderman Jokers.
Eric.
Alderman Eidman.
Eric.
Alderman Rainey.
Here.
Alderman Prince. Alderwoman Arbruster.
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Very good. A motion for approval of the agenda.
Reapproval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, takes us down to Happy's report. So, got an update at your seats. Bring your attention to item two. We had a bid opening today for skylights at the Welcome Center. We had no bidders. So, looks like the working companies are fairly busy. We'll revisit this and try to see if we can get something going in the next month or so. We may wait till after Christmas, but no bidders on that.
That's a big deal, no in-house consideration?
We just don't have the equipment to do it properly.
Right, I didn't know what.
Yeah, we need a contractor to do it, not just to have city employees do it.
Is it under control? I was just saying, are things under control now temporarily? I mean...
It is what it is. And you have a few leaks, and it depends on the type of rains we get, what kind of leaks we get. And sometimes it's over here, and sometimes it's over there. So, there's no rivalries, and we just need to get them all replaced.
Just put a tarp over it.
When we had the real heavy rains last year, we had to put a tarp out on the floor, and then a trash can in the middle, and then a catch-all kind of over the trash can.
Put the tarp on the outside.
Yeah, that cuts the sunlight out, and you can't really see in there very well.
The electricity, right?
We do, but lighting inside is not.
Lighting inside.
Not the best.
Well, it sounds like we're looking at the wrong issue.
You know, Happy with all the LED lighting and stuff like that, do we really need them? I mean, the general consensus is, is take them out and replace them. And that's going on at a pretty good pace. I mean, people just don't put them in anymore. And the ones that have them, if there's an issue, they close them up.
Yeah. I mean, we can do that. It's up to the board's decision. We had put in skylights in our budget, so we're just moving along with skylights. We can pull them out, cover it up, and... But we have to probably invest the same amount of money into the LED lighting.
Yeah, I think it's a safe.
I'm good with that, though. You, I think so.
The lighting in there is pretty bad anyway. I was there on Fourth Friday, and everybody had their cellphones out to try and see the art. So, I think the lighting needs to be addressed regardless.
And is this just kicking the can down the road? You know, because they typically have issues, are we just buying time till the new window has issues?
No, I'm buying time until the park service takes the building over.
That's true, too, yeah.
So, I mean, we're putting in a new alarm system because the system we have is just junk at this point. Has to be replaced. And the skylights, you know, it's... I like a little daylight myself. I think it just makes a better atmosphere. But yeah, the lighting internally is not that good. That would be on the agenda to get fixed in the next couple of years if we don't look at the park service taking it over. Then they can make their improvement if they want.
Is it worth having a conversation with the park service to see, since we didn't get any bidders, if they would be willing to help us, if we did something larger than the skylight replacement?
No, so they were going to pay for half of this anyway. So, they are contributing to whatever we decide to do. So, if you want to move forward with covering up the holes in the roof, it sounds bad when you say it. I mean, we can do that. Again, I don't know if we're going to get bidders for that or not either. I mean, it's...
Yes, whatever we can get bidders for, whatever's more feasible from a city standpoint if we're still looking to get rid of it.
And then we probably would need to draft plans on what kind of lighting we want to put in there and submit to electricians, because I don't think they want to just go in there and say, "Okay, what do you want?" That's a little too loose. We need to have something a little more... Something to present them so they can give us accurate quotes on.
I mean, you know, just reasoning, we had no bidders, nobody likes putting them in, you know, is one of the issues and stuff. Because they are, you know, they're either leaking from the outside in or condensation farming up in on them. You know, so, just a recommendation.
Okay. Item five, we're going to be sending letters to property owners next month who have deteriorated sidewalks, explaining the new sidewalk reimbursement program that you all adopted, and then see if we can get them interested in repairing or replacing their sidewalks. We're compiling addresses right now. I think I've got a list of seventeen, of which three of them are ours. So, we're in need of replacing sidewalks as much as others. So, we're aware of that, and we're going to look at doing that as well. But we'll start sending them to the property owners, just seeing if they want to participate in that program.
Is it possible to get a copy of that letter before or when it goes out, just in case we get questions, so we know what they're getting?
Yeah.
Thank you.
That's all I've got to highlight. Does anybody have any questions?
Good deal. Thank you.
Very good. Very good. Takes us to our staff reports. Jeff?
Good evening. In October, as you can see in the report, the overview had a successful event on Saturday, October 16th, with Nine to the Werewolf. The most uplifting part of that is it was sold out in advance with a total of 170 people in attendance. That was almost entirely of visitors from St. Louis and Cape Girardeau, which is also very positive. Most of those extended their stays, you can see, with the 25 advance tickets that were sold for the after-party for that event, so which meant that most of those were staying over for a couple of days. We had the Tourism Tax Commission and Tourism Advisory Council meeting on Tuesday, October 19th, where there was approval for rack cards to be printed and distributed along I-55, the new brochures, and most importantly, a new website. The flexibility for the spending categories means basically no specific line items included in all of those. Rural Heritage Days was well-attended despite the inclement weather that we had. Welcome Center numbers and a few retailers gave us an approximate number of 250 people attending. Visitors for the... At the Welcome Center for 2021 totals came to 1338. Already in October, we have surpassed 2,000 people at the Welcome Center this time. National Park Service is in their temporary counter space. We utilized the displays in the front for relocating the merchandising displays so that it's a lot more welcoming now and a lot more open space for large groups to enter the Welcome Center. So, I think that's working out very well. Also, the display cases, we've made use of those and categorized those so that it's a better representation of what we have here to offer, to immediately see that in the Welcome Center. And of course, social media is still growing. We're up to 3,600-plus likes with 3,855 followers. The engagement is up at 2%, both for the month and for the week. And the post-engagement, which is the most promising part of that, is moving in the right direction and up 11% for the last week, 6% overall in the month of September and October.
Jeff, I just wanted to comment, when I walked into Welcome Center Friday evening, I was very pleasantly surprised with the amount of space. It was kind of... I mean, it wasn't crowded, but there were quite a few people. It was really nice to not feel like you were on top of folks. And I liked how the gift shop items had been moved, not the first thing you encounter when you walk through the door. So, I think that's a great improvement.
Think that'll help with attrition as well and loss there.
Right, yeah.
Jeff, where are the rack cards located that you were talking about?
Currently, they're along most interstates throughout the state. We're hoping to really zero that in to more I-55. And that's something, we're actually in an extended contract right now with the company that's providing those for us and distributing those. And those will be concentrated, or at least there's conversation about concentrating them more up and down 55 to be more effective.
And arrest areas and...
Arrest areas and various spots along the way.
We sort of switched routes with COVID and got more along highways instead of like downtown attractions. They were focusing on a lot of those prior to COVID, and there was kind of a switch, and I think it's worked. I mean, I think we've determined that the newer locations have helped. But that was just last year that they sort of switched things up.
Obviously, as the habits for tourism is changing, we just discussed that just recently with the Governor's Conference on Tourism, and habits have changed. And so, people are making more impromptu decisions, and so thereby bringing that closer to home, I think, will help us more impactful.
Would you be getting out of state at all with those cars?
There are some options, and that's something I've got to look into over the next meeting in the next week or so. Thank you.
Good evening.
Hello, Eric.
How's everybody?
All right.
Doing well? Doing well. We're still fully staffed. I talked to Pete yesterday, and once we can get into the building and start moving in, I think he's going to come back and do some light duty stuff. And there's some hope that maybe he'll come back full duty in the next couple of months. Definitely hopeful for that. The remodel's going well, a little bit behind schedule, but it's really coming along nicely, so we appreciate that.
What's your best guess in moving in?
Hopeful for middle of November, but realistically, probably December. But we'll just have to see. I don't know, getting into deer season and everything, I'm sure that'll affect who's available to come work on it soon.
Deer season affects construction?
I know, I know, shocker. Does anybody have any questions, anything specific?
Eric, and I don't remember the D.T., it was a law enforcement officer that was lost in a small rural town in Missouri recently.
I saw one in Illinois, an Illinois officer.
Tried to reach him. Tried to reach him.
Could have been, and he was serving some type of... I don't remember what the...
An arrest warrant or...
No, it wasn't an arrest warrant. It was something simple like checking a vehicle or maybe serving some papers. But I mean, whenever we do that and stuff, because I've noticed it on your report, I mean, do we normally, one person or do we...
Typically, it's a one-offster response. Most of our paper service is done through the county, and so we'll get some numbers. Sometimes the courthouse will call over for paper service, and when it goes to dispatch, when they see the address, they give it to us. And it's usually forwarded to the Sheriff's Department. So, for most ex parte papers, things like that, that are generated from the courthouse, the county typically serves. If there's an arrest warrant generated from one of our cases that, you know, the county handles our court now, then we may go serve those. But most official court documents, I work with David a lot. If we have any nuisance violations or anything like that, our officers will issue those. But typically, the paper service or the process service at the Sheriff's Department handles that.
But why it's smart, did you send out two officers to the same...
Thank you.
Steve?
Evening, everyone. Give everyone an update on the electrical situation at the water plant. Midstates Energy came in, had parts overnighted the next day. I mean, most of you seen the event that happened or the aftermath. Midstates had parts overnighted in from Wisconsin or Minnesota, to be exact, and came in on Friday, two days later, had the plant running at full capacity. They are used parts, they are functioning parts, but it was a temporary fix. On the other hand, on that, the electrical update to the water plant, we've been happy received an email from Cochrane Engineering for review this week. So, we should have final plans on that here shortly. Water mains were completed on Fourth, Biltmore, La Porte. And let's see, the streets were... Street work has been completed as well. Bowens did a good job on that. Got a couple of little items we got buttoned up on it yet, but other than that, it's complete. Current update on the street work, we've purchased a couple loads of asphalt. We've patched water leaks that have been open for a while. Got some street repairs done. Got trees and brush cleared off the side of Seraphin Street. So, you can see the speed limit sign and no parking sign and the fire hydrant again. Parkhouse, did lots of cleaning in the parkhouse garage underneath the fire department, or the police department at this point. All two and a half, three and a half tons of material out of those two garages out there. They were... It was old parts, it was old belts, it was old motor blades. It was none of it useful to the city at this point. So, making some progress.
So, you put the status on that second back hole that... I mean, are we fixing it or are we...
We started to, and then we've started on streets and storm drain work. We've kind of set it out back for now. We've got some leaks fixed on it, we've got some glass repaired in it, we've got a tire fixed on it. There's still a hydraulic leak that goes to the transmission that is underneath the cab of it that we are addressing. Once that is fixed, it will be an operational piece of equipment.
What about our dump trucks? I had heard some... Dump truck issue.
Dump truck? One bed is rusted to the point that it's almost inoperable. That truck is out for bid at this point. One truck bed is waiting for delivery or installation. I was waiting on a call from the company this week, which I haven't heard, but it was scheduled to be in at the end of October. The other dump truck is fully operational and safe for use at this point.
So, for winter coming up and snow plowing and all that, we'll be in good shape?
We will have all three trucks running by winter.
Good.
Do we use any funds from the Special Road District for that? Because we had asphalting from Riverview up almost to KSGM Drive. Do you use any funds from Special Road District?
So, Special Road helped us with our section, which was from Riverview down to Robbins. So, we had... They donated $25,000 for that part of the project. They're doing their own roadwork on white sands.
Is that considered theirs or ours?
It's theirs. For Riverview North, it's theirs.
That's what I was thinking about, when you're...
Yeah, we coordinated between the two. They wanted to get that done this year as well as...
Yeah.
They wanted to get Four Street done. I mean, they also contributed to our part of the project.
Okay, so that was all theirs?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything on the COVID discussion? Any committee reports?
Just moved in the park on Saturday.
Looks like good weather.
Mark, what?
Yeah, we've got some hot chocolate, I think, there. I will be there. Our volunteer, Sam Purz, is going to be operating it for us, but...
Thank you. There's no... Any public comments? Public comments takes us to the consent agenda.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Thank you very much. Takes us to a public hearing, and we'll start at 6:16. The mayor of the board will hold a public hearing to consider the rezoning of the northwestern corner of 175 Coney Street. Parcel that is being requested to be rezoned is currently zoned as a R1 single-family residential. Sits between, is it Coneye?
Coin.
Coin? Very good. Thank you, Coney Street, and Mary Ellen Street along Market Street, and comprises approximately 1.5 acres of the 10.22 total acres of the lot. The 10.22 acres of the parcel is zone I-2 and used for manufacturing, warehousing, and the applicants are asking for the entire parcel to be zoned as such.
Thank you, sir. We received an application on August 27th, filing fee a few days after. Notice a meeting was mailed to the applicants and adjoining property owners on September 15th. Notice sent to media October 5th regarding a planning and zoning commission meeting on October 7th. At that meeting, Planning and Zoning Commission voted 602 to approve the recommendation to the board. That then, of course, was passed on to you. We ran an ad in the paper October 13th advertising this meeting this evening. As the mayor has said, this is slightly different than maybe your normal rezoning as it's a part of a parcel, but the parcel is zoned I-2 surrounded by R1. So, it's just slightly different, but it is just an extension of an existing zone. We sent out joining property letters to everyone within 185 foot of that piece, and which was approximately 30 people. And I received no responses whatsoever from any of the neighbors. That's all I have.
Dave, go ahead. One, I don't know if this is a concern or not and stuff, but I noticed there's a monitoring well on that property. But if we approve that, there's no liability to the city because of that monitoring well?
A monitoring well?
Yes.
I can chime in on that. So, all the monitoring wells have been abandoned. The... Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Is that better?
There you go.
Yes.
So, all of the monitoring wells have been abandoned. The property is clean, and we have EPA reports on hand. So, we've actually removed all of the monitoring wells. If you see one out there, that's one that's been pulled and hasn't been hauled off yet.
Yeah. Rick Gilbert is joining us, he's the owner of...
Yeah.
One of the owners of the property. Anything else?
Thank you.
If there's no other questions, we'll adjourn the public hearing at 6:20.
There you go.
All right. Takes us to whole business, which yours is none. So, that drops us down to new business. The first reading of bill number 4456, an ordinance approving a zoning change from an R1 I-single, R1 single-family residential to an I-2 general commercial district for a portion of 175 Coin Street.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Takes us to reading of bill number 4457, an ordinance of the City of St. Gen Ves, Missouri approving a tax-exempt equipment lease purchase agreement with the First State Community Bank for the purchase of two police vehicles.
Reapproval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion for second reading.
We have a motion.
Motion for second reading.
Second.
And a second. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Aye.
Takes us to the second reading of bill number 4457, an ordinance of the City of St. Gen Ves, Missouri approving a tax-exempt equipment lease purchase agreement with the First State Community Bank for the purchase of two police vehicles.
Reapproval.
Second.
We have a roll call, please.
Alderwoman Johnson.
Yep.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderman Jokers.
Yes.
Alderman Eidman.
Yes.
Alderman Rainey.
Yes.
Alderwoman Arbruster.
Yes.
Six yes, zero no's, two absent. Bill number 4457 now becomes ordinance 4376.
Thank you very much. Is there any other business? Bob's got something to say here?
This is concerning a fire that happened last Friday and stuff. I don't know if anybody's aware of it. On the end of Bay Street, we had a fire. And don't quote me that all of these are exact and stuff, but just kind of furthering the need to pursue something for the fire department. Initially, we had two certified firefighters show up. We had two, and they both each took a piece of equipment up there. The next two people that showed up were both, I guess you'd call them kind of retired firefighters. One brought a piece of equipment, and one came on his own vehicle. There was a small gas leak in the basement. There was an explosion, as you can tell by the walls being blown out. But it did create kind of a situation there. But... And the problem being with only two firefighters there, we had no backup if somebody went in that building, if somebody was trapped after the explosion. Shortly after that, a second alarm went out, you know, which basically brings in our mutual aid, and there were no response. Wasn't long afterwards, one of the firefighters called for a third alarm. Farmington and Perryville responded then. But I don't know if any of yous have ever had a house fire. I have. I didn't own it at the time, I do now and stuff. But fires spread very quickly, and that initial response time is absolutely critical. And we're kicking a can down the road here if we, as a city, don't do something to help the fire department. Get some people in there, whether it's somebody I know or anybody here knows. You know, the potential for loss of life, I can't tell you. But we're missing the boat here, and we need to do something more than just have a conversation every now and then. I don't have the answers, I don't know that anybody does, but I think we need to form a committee, a task force, something to look more into this because, you know, I hate for it to be too late, and then we say we should have done something. This is a big deal. You know, and this board has addressed other issues that we've needed. You know, and not that these aren't needed because they are very important things. You know, the panel at the water plant, I absolutely would never want to not do that. You know, and some other things around. But I think we need to push a little further here. We need to do something, and we need to do it soon. We've had two house fires in the last week, structure fires that have been totally lost. You know, and I don't have the answers, but, you know, and I don't see why we can't involve, you know, some board members, the administration, reach out to the county. I mean, we participate with the county and the recycling center. You know, something that may help all these little rural fire departments. I mean, I just think we've dodged a bullet here again. And I don't know how many more times we're going to do that with the amount of people. You know, and the particular thing in this one was the time of day. Shortly after 3 o'clock, and I know the fire department has contacted, they're working with a couple of firemen that work at Mississippi Line, but they were working days that day. They didn't get to respond till, you know, after they got off their shift and...
I'd like to answer it. As far as a volunteer fireman, would... That's my question. If we have two firemen that work for Mississippi Line, it's on their shift, and they can't respond until they get off work? I thought they would be able to, as a volunteer, you could get off work.
That's when you're working with them now and stuff.
Yeah.
To see if these people can be excused. You know, because some of those jobs out there, you just can't walk away from.
I think that would be a discussion we need to have with the management of Mississippi Line.
Well, but...
That would be where a committee could come in and identify maybe who has the workforce that would best suit a fire department, a volunteer fire department, and see if we can arrange some kind of...
You know, and I know with some of them, you know, there's a possible loss of income. I never have. You know, we just leave them on the payroll and stuff and let them, you know, as least we can do. But there's just some things we need to pursue here soon before it's too late. You know, all these people working shifts, you know, there's people sleeping in houses upstairs. That little house down there has some upstairs, and I'm telling you, there was no escape route once that fire caught for people to get out of that house. There was nobody upstairs, but... I mean, I'll volunteer, you know, to be on it, whatever it is, but I'm looking for, reach out to whoever, people from the fire department to be on it.
I think that's good. I think you get Kenny, Kenny, and you have that discussion, you start having some discussions of what you could do. You know, if it's a volunteer effort, you can... Kenny's been working diligently, and you... and you see signs up everywhere. It's in the newspaper, it's on the billboards, it's everywhere for volunteers, and everybody's struggling. So, and it's, and this is, it is, it's the utmost importance. I agree absolutely.
But I mean, just a prime example, in that fire there, you know, the second alarm went out and no response.
Well, that's because everybody's working the same. They're in the same situation. You know, every rural fire department is struggling with this, so...
You know, somehow we, if we can find some funds, I know Kenny gave us a report, you know, showing, you know, some of the outlying areas and stuff, you know, paying some money. I mean, we need to get some funds started somehow in the direction of this. I don't know what you could see that could be any more important than this.
Right.
I mean, these fires, well, Buck's been on the fire department a number of years. I mean, these fires go quick.
Oh, yeah, they're just...
And they're deadly in a short period of time.
It can be, absolutely.
You know, on Fourth Street, we had a loss of two lives.
Yep.
You know, when that two-story house got on fire. I just don't want to have to face that again.
So what do you want to, do you want to, do you want to get with Happy and, you know, pick some people? I'd be willing to sit.
I'd volunteer.
No.
Yeah. So who else wants to volunteer?
I'll volunteer.
Ashley, you volunteer? We got...
How about the guy on the screen up there? I think he'd be a good one.
He's raising his hand.
Oh, Mike's going to volunteer.
Blanket your coats.
I didn't have a comment. I just wanted to know, Happy, can we task the chief to give us a report specific to the manpower situation for this incident? Like, just a brief explanation of why we had two people respond and how many people would have been available, why they couldn't respond, just for informational purposes.
You want that for a regular meeting?
And certainly I would support Bob's effort. Anybody who wants me to do anything, I would throw my hat in the ring. So whatever we need to do.
You know, Happy, not that this is totally irrelevant to it, but, you know, I mean, a number of members of my family are on the department, and I can tell you, many Thanksgivings and Christmases, there were five people jumped up through Christmas dinner or Thanksgiving dinner and took off for fires, but the problem is we're losing that generation. You know, people move out of town. One of our family members moved out of town and one works in the city. And, but, you know, it's just something we need to address and...
And we just need to find a way to reconnect with, you know, the people that would be best suited to physically do the job. You know, the younger generations and finding ways to motivate them and getting involved.
You know, I did a little research, and of course, one of the fire departments, small fire departments over towards Farmington, Wolf Creek, just formed a fire district. I know it was kind of highly debated and stuff and how it was funded, but it did pass. And then when I got to checking, that little fire department, and it's just south of the intersection of thirty-two and Cars there in Farmington, they cover a big part of western Saint Gene County. You know, I don't know the legalities about this and stuff like that. But, you know, we're just, we're dodging a bullet here, and we're going to dodge it one too many times.
They got to commit to that training too, when we bring somebody new on, and that's pretty intense, and it takes a while. I don't know if it's six months or three months, but I ain't sure.
And then it's an ongoing training, but...
Well, every month, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's about thirty hours.
Oh, during the year?
A year, and...
Yeah, probably.
We stifle these guys like three hundred if they attend every one of those meetings. And, you know, the whole brotherhood thing of the fire department has kind of diminished. You know, but we've got to, we've got to find a way to put some money somewhere to try something. Whether that's the answer, I don't know, but something's got to be done. And thank you for joining, Mike. I appreciate your help.
Sounds good. Anybody else? If there's no other business, call this meeting adjourned. And you will just start the work session?
Yep.
Need to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So yours, Happy?
All right, let's talk streets.
Oh, we love streets.
Why are we doing that one here?
Oh, I'm sorry. Let's not talk streets.
You gotta get my people some time.
Just checking to see if anybody paid attention to that.
Told you. I told him it's six.
Down the list.
Yeah, I have a couple. Might be here too, but...
So I got to talk, do I have to talk long? Because that's one thing Joe Prince doesn't like, is to talk too much.
He's not here and that's not...
He's not here.
So I can just speed along. All right, fair enough. All right. We approved a budget for engineering and the remodeling this room that we are in. Talked to Steve Bacon, who did our drawings for the overall plan, and then we divided it up into phases. So now we're up to phase number two and got a quote from him, less than six thousand dollars to do the architectural and the engineering part of it with the group that he works with. And I didn't know if the board wanted to continue with our association with Steve, with Bacon Commercial Design. If you want us to do something different, do you want us to also have a committee that we had last time that I think was helpful in working on the design of this building and stay with the same group that we had last time?
So with this being much less of a remodel, are we required to have engineered drawings?
It's still a commercial project.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, I think so. I think we should stick with it.
I think we should move forward.
Yeah.
We've got the basics, the sketch plan done, so now we're just getting down to the specifics. Removing a wall, putting in standard seating, maybe having a desk here, but opening this room up some, getting new carpet, probably new walls, getting electronics, microphones. I mean, there's a lot of things that'll be involved in it. New HVAC system so that when it's summertime, we're not toasty.
Yeah.
It's one of the keys.
And is that going to include the attic work?
I mean, all this comes out, so, yeah. It's the same thing we did in the police department. So what I propose is that I get the committee together with Steve, we start talking about it, and see if there's anything in particular that the committee's thinking about that we need to do. Steve can come in with some sketches on what he's thinking with the, how he wants to lay out the board table and the improvements. I mean, this is going to be much simpler than the police department, but still, we want to make it look nice, so...
But we don't need Taj Mahal either.
No.
So does this whole area behind you, I mean, that doesn't need to be there anymore without the municipal work?
And even if it was, a judge could sit at a dais anyway and do his part. Every city does that. So, yeah, that comes out. That increases our room back towards that end of the room. We widen it out, and we are going to limit access to that door for any activities that go on in here. So board nights, we're going to limit folks coming in to come in that back door. We're going to create some parking spaces for handicap. It's handicap accessible. That's how people can get in and out. This will be emergency exit only.
So are we going to increase seating capacity in here then by...
Yeah, we will a little bit. We'll see what the size, what we end up with and what we calculate. At this point, we wouldn't end up with the chairs so tight together. We can move them out a little bit. These tables will be removed. We might leave one in here for meetings. But again, conceptually in my head, where we want to go with this, what I want to sit down with a committee, especially board members, so you know how you want this to feel.
So do we have a budget number?
Hundred thousand for the remodel. We had fifteen thousand in there for the engineer, for the architect and engineer, and then seventy-five hundred for chairs. So we'll have a little money to play with.
New chairs?
New chairs.
Where does City Hall move whenever all the construction is going on?
Has that been thought about, meetings?
Yeah, we haven't gotten there yet.
Gotcha.
Yeah. I want to get at least the drawings started, and then we can worry about the other part of it. We've, because we've considered the meetings are going to have to be at some other location, obviously. We've talked to the fire department where we do the park board meetings. We've also, at times, moved on to the KC Hall and to the American Legion. So we may ask them if it's okay if we can use their facilities for a temporary basis. We at least don't have to move our offices. That's going to be the concern next door when we have to do that part of the life of the police department. That's going to be the challenge.
Eric, did we ever get your problem out here in the shed resolved?
Yeah, we talked to Donnie about it. We'll get some ideas together and bring it to the board. Right now, we're just trying to air it out when the cable is in the rod door cracked. We have a big fan in there. Just trying to get air moving.
But we don't have any funds budgeted for?
No, not really, not in this year's budget.
Yeah, so whenever we do this, we need to address their mold factory out there in the shed.
We can. It's going to take away from what we do in here.
We need to do this first and figure it out, I guess.
I think, and we can do that, it depends on what it costs. I mean, this, a full HVAC system, that's going to be expensive, so, yeah, we would need to budget. Otherwise, it may be a simple fan, ventane kind of setup.
Yeah, I've seen those done, fans with the emistat and thermostats and then an intake, yeah.
Yeah, so, and that may be something we can just, we can approve on our own and easily get it installed.
Right. It's just that while we're doing this, if we have somebody here working, you know, doing a little electrical or something, then we could catch that also.
Yeah. So I will contact the committee directly with some emails. We'll set something up with Steve. Okay, great. So stormwater discussion. Talked to Cochran about getting me an estimate, doing a watershed study. Also, our stormwater system, trying to give us some understanding of it, what the cost would be to do the study to see. When I first talked to him, they thought I was talking about I and I. So what was getting into the city sanitary system, it's like, no, we're looking at what's across the area. We have two locations of the city that we're particularly interested in. It's like, well, it's going to take us a little longer to estimate what that's going to cost. So I said, not in a major rush, but let's see what that number is. So I should have something for you next month on that. And then Ron Klein found a tree behind his yard that was in the middle of that creek that runs along his house. Steve's going to take care of that through Public Works, get that out of there and get it, get it all cleaned out and set it aside. We'll clean that problem up.
Happy? When we run into something like that, I know things like that have been handled, kind of, maybe not through the chain of command. You know, if we see something like that, maybe big, little, you know, whatever, should we contact you first? Do you mind if, I mean, how should we properly handle it if we see something like that that needs to be done?
Send an email, give me a call, send a text, however you want to do it. Go through me. I mean, it's easier if it funnels through one person than I can get it distributed.
I mean, do we have to issue work orders then and stuff now with the changeover in Public Works or...
We're working on a work order system. We haven't gotten to that part yet. We're working on that. But, yeah, that's the way it'll eventually work. So, I mean, it can probably come through me or Pam or Sue or, you know, anybody in City Hall eventually, and then we'll all have access to it.
My question's probably more for Steve. I think I've, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think I've noticed the street sweeper a little more often?
Yeah, we're working towards a schedule. We're still trying to build it. Tentatively, we've been sending it to, like, we sent it out to the Point Base subdivision or the downtown area or the north end of town. But we're trying to, trying to come up with a smooth, smooth rotation for it. So it's hitting subdivisions as well as inside streets, as well as the main streets and downtown.
Okay, so that should help with some of the leaves on stormwater grates that...
Yeah, prior to the heavy storm that we had the other day, staff went out, they cleaned storm drains in the area, picked up limbs before and after the storm. And before that evening, we had an after-hours meeting, meeting area and Cory. And we kind of came up with a plan. We notified our staff on the water and sewer side of what was coming and notified the staff on the street and parks department side. Everybody was prepared to come out and everybody was ready.
Thank you.
Steve, somebody made a comment and stuff. I mean, are we kind of taking Public Works people, water people, sewer people and kind of working together on projects?
We haven't yet, but depending on the project, I mean, it could happen, so... Now you may see myself or Cory on a project that the Public Works are doing just as a supervision or a guidance issue.
Right.
Anything else on stormwater? Takes us to streets.
Let's talk streets. We budgeted two hundred and fifty thousand for the, for this year's street projects. We totaled one hundred ninety-six thousand four hundred and thirty-two based on estimates, which I'm hoping are close. So we have fifty thousand to play with. We have one other street project that got enlisted, and that was North Eighth Street, something to pass along. Here is, so we did a survey, Gary Roth and I did a survey late last year. So this is where we come up with the, where I come up with some of my listings for the street projects. So that's just something for your information. But that was, but we did have an opening. We do have, you know, money available to add in for an extra street or an extra section. Depending upon the square footage, we'd have to calculate how much that would be. But with that list, it's one is, one is bad, ten is good, and then everything in between. So we tried to get what we consider to be the worst. And that's just based on observation from us driving around for a morning.
Have you shared this with Alliance?
I haven't, not with Steve directly, but he did get it.
But I do have a copy.
Okay. So this fifty-three thousand dollar, I mean, does that have to be spent on hardcore paving or can that be on engineering for a particular street or...
That's, that's why I bring it to you all.
I want to chime in here and before we get too far into discussion, I think a couple of you might already know, but last week, last Wednesday, I met with, I scheduled a meeting with one of my constituents in the International Subdivision, Ann Pope, who's here tonight. And a total of twelve residents from Audubon Street showed up to Ann's residence to meet with me. They wanted to talk about their street and ultimately ask the board to give it some consideration in this. Just a couple of points that came out of that gathering. One resident said she had lived on the street for more than thirty years. Another resident said she had been there for about sixty-four plus. And in all the time that they've been there, they've not seen any major improvements made to the neighborhood beyond the half of Lynn Drive that was just recently done about four years ago, maybe.
About three, I think, three years ago, three or four years ago.
Yeah, but, and then the chip seal, which was a bigger mess than it was a solution, honestly. I deal with it on my street, on Scott Street, and it's just a mess. Potholes are opening up left and right. You know, you fill one and two more open up. Austin Street is still hanging on. It's not bad, but the worst in the neighborhood are LaRose, Audubon, and Scott Street. And so I would like to ask the board to consider at least one of those three streets to be added this year. I know it wasn't on our initial list, but Ward Four hasn't had a street done on these last two budgets. And probably not since the Lynn Drive. And with the, a lot of the waterline projects being more focused on the north end, I'm afraid it's going to continue to get pushed back if we don't prioritize it when we have a little room like this. So I don't know if you guys don't mind. I don't know if Ann wanted to say anything, if you don't mind.
Yep.
Thank you.
For those of you that don't know me, my name is Ann Pope, and I've been a Saint Genevieve resident for all my life. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Anne Pope, and I've been a St. Genevieve resident for all my life. I've been a resident of Audubon Estates or Audubon Street for four years. We've got a great neighborhood, everybody there takes care of their property, their houses, their lawns. The only thing bad is the street, and it is really, really bad. The last couple storms that we've had, the water just, I mean, there's no place for the water to go. And that's because there's dips and potholes. And you may think I'm exaggerating, but there are places in our street after a good rain that I could stock it with fish and they would live for a couple days. And it's, it's the truth, it's, I'm not exaggerating. We've got twenty-seven houses on our street. Two of those houses are group homes for needy, special needs people. So we have bus traffic, we have trash trucks, we have a lot of traffic on that street. Some of the residents don't even have sidewalks because they were told to hold off because the street was gonna be done and then they could put in the sidewalks. We have residents there from two weeks just moving into a house up until a lady that's been there for sixty-something years. And she's the one that said that there's been no paving on that street for thirty years. And then I have another resident that's been there for fourteen years, and he said it was on the docket to pave Audubon seven years ago and it wasn't done. So we're just very disappointed that nobody has taken interest in our side of the town. I hope that can change.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
You live in that neighborhood?
Yes.
What are your thoughts, I, I, and what my thought was on is, and there's a lot of streets that need paving, but I thought we would go, and what we've done over in Rosier's is the park and then Cedar, which are connected. Every street in that neighborhood could use some asphalt as yours, so we were going up and around and down Lynn, you know, and that would make the loop, which would have a good street, and then go down the streets.
But how long will that take?
My question is, would it be, would it be better, maybe it would be better, since you live in the neighborhood and probably travel Lynn Street on the side that we were planning on trying to pave, maybe we don't pave that one this year and maybe do Audubon or one of the other streets.
That would be awesome, because we.
I mean, I mean, those, but I, 'cause I don't know the, the condition of the street over there, but that, that's a possibility. But the only other thing that was concerned, I talked to when Martin was our administrator, the, the problem you have, some of it is, is you have a sinking street because there's a, there's a bad base underneath, the base is not so good. So I don't know as if it's, it's feasible to just asphalt it without doing something with the base. Because you can see that on the sides where the trash trucks and.
Right, right, and that's where the fish would live.
Yeah, I, I know that.
Just a comment real quick, Lynn Drive has not been approved, it's about a hundred thirteen thousand estimate. It's not on the approval list for this year, so that, yeah.
It's approved as Xed.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so that's one, that was, that put us over.
So do we think, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Do we think there's gonna be, this is more, we're gonna need to look into, I know at least Audubon and Scott Street engineering-wise? Because it, I don't wanna just put a Band-Aid on any of those streets. And I just wonder if this is gonna be more of an investment so that we do it right? And if that's gonna require some extra time.
Right, and we haven't, we haven't gotten into it that deeply on those yet, so I, you know, we, we've been looking at where our waterline projects went and the roads we thought needed to be paved and finished. We have not looked at the condition of Audubon or Walnut Street or some others that seem to be having, you know, structural issues.
And, and I can agree with that, the last thing I wanna do is slap a Band-Aid on it that we're having to fix again here in a few years or tending to just potholes for the next twenty, thirty years. But I, I, I just wanted to ask the board that we start considering it a little bit more, 'cause when I look at the, the streets in, in Ward Four, I mean, Valley Springs, we're not likely to have to do much of that any, anytime soon ahead of all this list. St. Jude still seems to be holding up okay.
They were fortunate, though, that, that area.
Yeah, yeah, um, when I, when I look at Ward Four, the International Subdivision is the, the worst of it. And I would argue, I don't know how many of you have driven some of the streets lately, I know Pam has. It's, it's, it's rough, so if, if we, to do it right, if we can't fit it in with this little amount left over, I'd, I'd just ask that we start moving forward and pursuing it. It's, it sounds like it was something that, like Anne said, was on the docket prior. One of the constituents in Ward Four said that in the very first edition of the Herald in twenty-fourteen, I think January's twenty-fourteen, there was a, a story that ran that outlined that these streets over in International were gonna be done on that. But the board has turned over quite a bit since then. So obviously, things didn't happen if that's what the promise was.
Well, you know, something else, I, I, you look at, at the condition and what we got going here. Early on, I, I made a proposal to look into doing some kind of bond issue to help fix some of these streets. I mean, it's something we need to look at. And, and if we're gonna get really serious about fixing some of the streets we have around here, and I don't know, it's a costly adventure, but, but sooner or later, somebody's gonna have to, to make a decision. And, you know, nobody wants to hear, there's, there's different deals where, I think down in Perryville, they, they, they work out somehow where you pay for what's out in front of your house, I, and those are things just, and it seems to go well down there. I don't know if it'll fly here, but those are things that, those, and those are the hard decisions that, that we need to make.
Yeah, Farmington does a similar, you know, and Happy, if you'd have a chance, to maybe look into that a little bit. But kind of the further the Band-Aid thing, Steve, what's the utilities like out there in those streets? I mean, are they?
Water and sewer lines have been replaced out there, aren't they?
We don't have to worry about that if we go over there.
If you drive through there, you can still, still see the patches where they were, where they run down the road.
Especially on, on Audubon, you won't see it so much on, on my street with the chip and seal and stuff. But Audubon, you, you can see all the waterline tie-ins. And that's, that's kinda what worries me with, with the waterline project. And I think it's a great idea to coincide the street projects, you know, right after the waterlines go through, like we, we did this previous budget year. But if we're so focused on that, these streets are gonna get missed if we're not intentional about it. And Ward, Ward Four is feeling really left out on all this, so.
You know, one of the comments that I had, you know, just recently, and I shared it with Steve and stuff, the patching seemed like it took a new place. And not that that's a solution out there, because it isn't the stuff, but if, I think if we're more aggressive with repairing our streets, you know, on a more timely matter, and I, I have faith that that is definitely gonna happen and stuff, I think that'll help. But do we have a traffic counter? One of those devices where you stretch across the road?
We've got a couple of them.
Yeah, we do, and we can also go to the RPC and they can, they can do that for us as well.
Right, you know, and talking about a, a bond issue, Paul, I mean, yeah, because a bond issue basically refers back to the city's debt. I mean, are we in a position to look at something like that? I mean, do we have enough of our debt retired? Are we, I know with the water tar thing, that was kind of a.
Well, you can, it depends on the type of funding that you wanna go with. If you wanna do a general obligation bond, that's different, but we, we probably still have some capacity, but I'll have to check with Sue and see what that number is now. But it, it may not be, it may be a certificate of participation, it could be where you, you work it off the debt service, but you're, you're gonna have to pay for it somehow.
Right.
Out of, out of whatever funding we have either coming in or an additional tax to, that's established for that.
I think we're taxed out, I'm sorry.
No, but I'm, you know, but that's, you've gotta come up with some way to, to make sure that you, you can pay it.
You say that, Bob, but I, I think you let the people decide that, I mean, you're one people.
I, I.
You know, I mean, you.
We have a sales tax rate.
I understand that, but.
In the state of Missouri.
Yeah, so.
You know, that's, that's not a liable, viable source, I don't think. I don't know what else is out there, but, you know, it, you know, there again is another issue that, you know, because of our flat, you know, tax revenue that we have, we're not gaining any ground there. And there's just some ways we need to be a little more creative with our funding somehow.
Yeah, I don't know that the, the tax is the right route, I guess it depends on how, even giving it up to the people, I don't, it, I guess it depends on exactly what you're, if it's all streets or if it's a, you know, short-term, you know, bond issue or whatever, or whatever, that's gonna go away in time. But if it's just for Ward Four, or, you know, for, for a particular neighborhood or a particular area, it's not likely to get support from the other wards. But, I mean, if you're talking about an overall project with a bond issue, then possibly, but it, I, I, I don't know that the sport's there. I mean, the last tax I passed, it wasn't a very big percentage difference and.
We all see what we got every year, two hundred thousand dollars, and it doesn't go very far. You could spend two hundred thousand dollars on a street and a half in, in one neighborhood.
I, I can agree, it's just something, we just might have to really, really dig and look at the best option and.
Right.
But I, I just don't wanna be like, yes, let's go to the people and, and figure out if they want tax or not. I, I'd like that to be a last resort, but I want us to really look at this.
Oh, one of the last, I don't think it was this particular one or reflects this, but we kinda divvied up the money and didn't each ward get a street?
Well, if you look at it, it's, you know, we, we tried that, you know, so I, you know, right now, we just spent all of our, our asphalt in on the finish and cedar and then down here where the, where the sewers, you know, where the waterlines went in, so. And now we got more waterlines going in, so we're gonna have to, we need to fix, we're gonna have a street to finish, you know, to go out, you know, so. But there's other streets we, you know, you know, maybe we don't do, you know, this, let the, there's different things here. We, we wanna decide, we, maybe Maple, the Washington, you know, I, those are all small numbers, but I don't, it's up to you all, so. One thing that has to be done is the, this waterline project down here, 'cause it's gonna be, we're gonna have to fix it, finish that street. 'Cause it, it is a main connector going out, you know. I talked to, on this is Little Rock Landing, the, that, going to the ferry up there. I talked to Paul Arnold, he said, they'll kick in twenty-five thousand for that. So we'd be foolish not to take advantage of that and have some extra money to go somewhere else.
So that forty-five thousand dollar number would reduce to twenty thousand dollar.
Yeah, yeah.
Is it possible, Happy, to drive the ones that we did not, that are still in the recommended but not Xed along with the streets in the International Subdivision and update this? Give us some updated numbers so we can look at it again as far as ratings?
It's in that sheet that I handed out. I mean, that's, I don't think they're gonna have deteriorated.
Oh, this is just from last year?
Yeah.
I apologize, I thought this was a little older.
Yeah, no, this is, we, we had some older, older lists, and I, you updated this list last time.
Thank you, sorry.
Is there much required to just get initialized on, on the streets in International to see if this is an actual feasible number or if it is gonna need more engineering? I don't, I don't know what goes into that or, or the cost and so.
One of the things I was gonna recommend for next year, I was, 'cause we were putting money into the streets this year, is to have Cochran come to, come through and do a survey of all the streets and set up a program for us to do. We had that in Festus and it was very successful. And we, what you ended up doing, and this, this can be problematic, was over a ten-year, ten-year span, you went from neighborhood to neighborhood, but they're done now. So now they go back and they just do maintenance. And we, we improved all of the streets to make them fairly smooth and, and in good shape and just keep maintenance on them. And I think that's what we've lost here, and, and what Bob was saying is we've lost, lost it because we haven't done enough maintenance either. So I would recommend that we have the engineer come in, let's do the survey, give us a plan. Every year, you know what the streets are that need to be done, based on what they look at, you know, that, what the problems are, what are the worst, what needs to be accomplished. But they can also give you an estimate and then look at the, the street itself to see if it's gonna take more than just an overlay. It's gonna take some major repair. We're gonna have to pull out, you know, pull out all of the asphalt that's there, go back to new base and then go back with a, an overlay of that. That is something we can do.
How did Festus fund all of that that they got to that point? I mean, did they do a bond issue or did they just?
Festus has a, the same as, same gen they have a transportation tax. And that's, that funds that program, but that's a half a million a year, up to six hundred thousand.
Farmington has a similar.
Plus, they all, and I should say, that was a county tax, 'cause we also have a county tax. That was the county tax that paid for it, and then the city had a, had a transportation tax, and that paid for, that paid for anything else in the department. So they were looking at about one and a half million a year. And we have eight hundred and fifty thousand, six hundred million or a thousand dollars that we spend, so.
I certainly like the idea of the long-range planning. Otherwise, it does start to feel like certain neighborhoods are constantly getting missed. I mean, we've got, there's a couple of twos on here, I think, and we haven't even discussed, well, at least one of them. 'Cause it's by me, and that's the only reason I notice, that one block of Jefferson Street from Second to Main, or that's a four, I guess, but.
Yeah, we did some patching down there and that, that kinda relieved it for a temporary.
Yeah.
A temporary time.
Yeah.
And, and this is just based on, again, my observations, not having any background of, you know, who's, who's said what or what's been promised in the past. It's just, here's what I see.
Yeah.
And then I'm trying to bring to you what I think works with what we're doing structurally or with our infrastructure, but also what I see that needs to be, needs to be done quicker than, than others. 'Cause we've got some, some streets that are just totally lost at this point.
Ninth Street?
No, this would be over actually on the other side of sixty-one. Between sixty-one and the Trotman.
Yeah, Gex Street.
Yeah, Gex Street, Burrow does, they're, they're in bad shape. So we have some others that we need to get to.
I just invite anybody up on Ninth Street and stuff with the school buses and all of school traffic's coming in and out of there, and there's.
Oh, I don't disagree, but you, you said yourself that you, we need to figure out some other solutions for that.
Right, yeah, it's not an overlay.
Beyond just a, an overlay.
Right.
So that's a much bigger project.
And I think you had, like, Chadwell was a project you hadn't anticipated, and then suddenly it's thrust on you to do it. There goes money that may have been allocated to something else.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It had to go to that.
Yeah, and I echo what, what Suzie said, you know, I really like the idea of a, a long, a long-range plan that better commits future boards. You know, if we can say this is the plan, then why rock the boat when it's a good plan? So, so if something's scheduled to get done in, in the next few years, it's still likely to get done instead of what, what we've done in the past. You know, pick a couple of streets or, you know, yeah, we'll get to that in the next couple of years and then board switches out and they've got different priorities.
But it still doesn't tie any projects to the future board, though, it just gives a.
Not, not, not ultimately, but, but if you have a schedule and everything's tied to, you know, like, when, the future boards aren't gonna, aren't likely to come in and rock this waterline project upside down and be like, whoa, no, I don't wanna do that. We're gonna completely scrap it, they could, but it's a little less likely.
It was easier for us to say, hey, how can we not in my neighborhood? Well, we're gonna be in your neighborhood in twenty twenty-five.
Yeah.
And we're gonna do all your streets.
Yeah, and, and stuff like that, so, so I really like that idea, but I, you know, admittedly, I do have a little bit of, some guilt that, you know, if something's not done in, in that neighborhood soon, it's still hard to go back to my residents and, and tell them, you know, we gotta do this plan here and it's gonna be about three years before we, at minimum, before we get, get to this area, so.
You have another one here, too, right?
So what we may do is, is we can go down at least, we may just, what we call pottling it a little bit, see what kind of base we have, see what, what kind of materials are in there now, how thick they are, and then we can, you know, come up with a plan on that, at least for one street.
Do you recall, Happy, what that study cost Festus, or?
It wasn't that much, I think it was like twenty-five, thirty thousand. I don't think it's, it won't be, it won't be too difficult to get it done. Won't set us back too far where we're gonna miss out on some streets.
And can we, can we do something like that? Can we reach out to more than one engineering firm?
I've seen multiple, the reason I say this, I've seen multiple reviews done on streets. Cochran's was the most simplistic yet comprehensive. Others are so comprehensive that you get lost in, in the data and you can't find what needs to be done. Cochran's was laid out with a map, showed you where everything was going to be done, what streets are going to be covered, neighborhoods that were going to be covered. And then, so that was the first ten years and then said, here, repeat. And here's what you can look forward to in the next ten years.
So they did that study for Festus?
No.
In the meantime, we're going to try to spend this fifty-three before the end of the season or the season's gone?
No, that's why we're doing this now.
That's next year.
Is we're, yeah, this is the next, this is this budget year. Instead of waiting until next year.
We don't necessarily decide at night, but within the next week or so.
I would like, yeah, I'd like to know so I can get this put out for bid this winter. And then the contractors can get it set up for spring, summer. We'll get it done before the end of the budget year instead of being past budget year as we, as it occurred this year.
And two, we can give a little more of a timeline to them. They, you know, start so many days and finish so we don't get drug out like we did this year.
Right.
Right.
This work, this Roser Alley, that's actually Maple to Ridgeway. It's not Washington, Maple to Washington.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah.
I know that's rough and bad, but I sure wouldn't. I mean, there's.
No, I just, it was all here and it's got the X right. That's all I'm going to mind.
Well, because of size and it is, it, it will be lost at a, at a certain point. It's like the parking lot in KSGM, that section of KSGM that's just, if we don't do anything this year, then we will not have, we'll have to redo it and it'll be three times as much.
Yeah.
Yeah, if that alley, I think some patching on it would be fine, not big.
We got more traffic than you think on there and you know that too, going through that little alley. That's you.
And, and yeah, if you want to take that off, redo patching on that alley, we'll do that and then you can look at that sometimes.
We might deck that out.
And that's why I'd ask earlier, you know, because of the change with Alliance and stuff, if, just a re-review of everything and make sure we're all on the same page. I appreciate the expertise.
What's that?
Oh, I just, there's no, we got another one for you.
Do you want to say anything? She's a longtime resident of Chad Street. I've been on that street for sixty-four years.
I was going to say, I, I knew that.
They did the street just once in them sixty-four years.
Right.
Yeah.
I'm looking at what I told her.
After they had it all done, they dug down the street to put this pipe in or whatever all the way down the street. And that is still, just like that.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, it's not one of the newer neighborhoods, but it's probably one of the more established and it is nice. And, you know, there is no, uh, issues with any of the property owners or whatever.
There's a lot of revitalization that's happened over the last several years in that neighborhood. A, a lot of people have bought some of the old, older homes and, and, and made some more modern updates. Um, you've got people that have, you know, lived there for, for many years. That Ann mentioned earlier, there's a resident that she moved in six years ago and wanted to put a, a sidewalk in front of her property right away. But was advised, you know, hold off, you know, because you put that in now and then they add a couple inches of overlay, you're, you're losing your sidewalk a little bit. And I can relate to that personally because I want to do the same thing in front of my home. And, and I know a couple of other people in that neighborhood that would tend to their sidewalks or put in new ones if the street were better established. Right now, you've got the, the sides crumbling about and, you know, I, I tried to ride a, a bike on Scott Street not too long ago and makes me nervous with all that chat, all that rock just so loose. I see these kids whipping, whipping their bikes around on it and.
That's what happened on Cedar Lane up there. An elderly man was out there on that street and fell and was hurt because of the loose, it's just coming apart.
It, it's loose and, you know, they, they came through, uh, the street crew came through last year and patched a bunch of potholes on Scott Street and I know I'm missing Scott Street a lot, but it's what I see because I live there. But they patched a whole long stretch almost across two front yards or whatever. And it's like, it's just Band-Aid after Band-Aid after Band-Aid. So we've got to get moving in that neighborhood in some way.
Plus.
I don't, I don't know if, you know, if we were to cut Maple, that alley, that Roser Alley up there and just do patching there, if, if the twenty, you know, add that to the fifty-three and some change that we have, if that would help cover some of the engineering and why not on those roads, but.
Might not be that bad.
Any board support is appreciated, so.
It would be that square footage, so.
Paul, I kind of like your idea of pursuing, I mean, at least look at that bond issue thing if you can afford it and make a, you know, because I don't know, we're never going to get caught up at two hundred thousand dollars.
All right, and, and the problem is you only looked into that, looked into it once. And it was, you know, to, for, for us to afford it, if we could only get like a million dollars. I mean, a million dollars is a lot of money, but.
Better than two hundred.
Take care of my whole neighborhood.
Yeah, it would fix, it would probably fix one, it could fix one neighborhood. But we're going to look at that too. We got this fifty-three thousand, that difference. And we got twenty-five thousand we're saving. So maybe if it's, there's no guarantees on Audubon, you've got to look at the base because we don't. If it's like what we're doing on point base, well, you can't do that, so.
No, I can understand that. I would just like us to, to figure out what needs to be done to those streets and if any one of the three of the worst, like I said, Austin still seems to be holding up fairly well. But like Scott Street gets a, a ton of traffic because people are cutting through to avoid the stoplights and stuff. She mentioned Audubon's getting a lot of traffic because of some of the homes there and, and it being kind of a cutaway if you're coming from Eagles area over there.
Well, the same thing's happening in Roser too, because all those side streets are getting.
We had our, we had our street on a list here some time ago, which was quite a while. Nobody, nothing was ever done on it.
Yeah, so, so that's the, the turnover of the board and, and what I want to try to avoid and, and hope that I have your support moving, moving forward in the future budget years.
Next question for Steve. Steve, if we do a little more timely patching and stuff and, and a little more, rather than just scattering some blacktop out that we get in and we cut, you know, and, and we establish a good repair and stuff. I mean, if we do that consistently year after year, I mean, can we offset some of these things?
You're going, you're going to prolong the inevitable.
Right.
As far as being, being the saving grace or adding, adding years and years to the life of a street, it's going to fail in its entirety, not just because of potholes, so.
Any other questions? Just will talk about this in the next meeting. No? Well, I've got two more meetings this year, so.
I was saying, I may hold off till December because my, my thought is in November, we're going to finish up our tour of the buildings. So I'd like to do, I'm hoping the police department will be like that close, we'd be able to take a tour through there. Do the fire department, welcome center and the parkhouse. So we need to finish that up. So that's my anticipation for November.
In the meantime, is there anybody that we can call to see if there might be some, or anything that we can do to see if there's more that we need to do on those streets?
We'll, we'll follow up on that.
Okay.
Yeah. That, that's, that's what I've got written down.
Cool. I appreciate that.
In that way, we can, I, in that way, we've got time to get something together.
Yeah.
Make final decision maybe in December and then we can go off a bid.
No, I can appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any other business happen?
I don't have anything.
Well, if there's no other business, anybody have anything else to say? Call our work session adjourned.
Adjourned.